Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meetings, February 20th. It is about 7:05. Call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Moza?
Here.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Here.
Trustee Watts?
Here.
Chair Thorp?
Here. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes for the following Board of Trustees Meetings. Regular Board of Trustees Meeting, January 17th, 2023. Closed Session, January 17th, 2023. Recommended Action, make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So moved?
Support.
Moved by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Barry. Any corrections that anyone sees? Hearing none. May we attach a unanimous roll? All right. At this time, I'm going to actually pivot from what we had talked about doing because I will get too emotional. I'm going to hand that one off to you. Last Monday, this board met for our regular P-12 Board Meeting. Arriving home, we heard about the news from Michigan State. And then on, as the week progressed, we heard about all the different things that were going on and how it was evolving. I reached out to the college president and also the superintendent. I asked them to please help us with drafting a resolution. One thing that we had heard at a board meeting, and we hear it many, many times, is words just don't do it. So what I said is, well, let's draft some words that we can put our own body behind. And I circulated to the rest of the board that something needs to change. And if it's not us using our words to get people to make the change happen, who will? So I would ask President Cavalluna, then, if you're able to read the resolution that was prepared, and then this board can vote on it.
Of course, Mr. Chairman. This is a document titled Supplemental Agenda Action Item, Henry Ford College Board Report Number 4686, February 20, 2023. It is titled Resolution in Support of Michigan State University and Actions to Create Safer Communities. I do believe that the chairman is asking you trustees to hear this resolution and then vote on it in a roll call vote. Whereas, as leaders of Henry Ford College and firm believers in the life-changing power of public colleges, we are devastated that our colleagues at Michigan State University have endured death and violence on their campus in East Lansing. Whereas, we see the Spartan Nation as our teammates in our public education mission, and we mourn their losses. Whereas, our college is committed to help any student or employee on either of our campuses who is suffering as a result of this tragedy. Whereas, we know that many times these tragedies intersect with the difficult realities of mental illness, and therefore stand committed to support our community as it works to understand and address the real harm that mental illness brings to individuals and communities. Whereas, we must also express unspeakable anger that our society continues to be traumatized by acts of violence by people with firearms. Whereas, we may never be certain of what motivates these evil acts. It is abundantly clear that all public leaders must address the continuing senseless loss of life and violence. Be it resolved, the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees encourage all leaders, voters, students, and citizens to see and address what is clear. Firearms are increasingly being used in our nation's public places to cause irreparable harm through violence and terrorism. This scourge is not a problem of one area, one type of institution, or one type of community. It is seemingly everywhere, and we must work together to stop it. Now, therefore, be it further resolved, the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees support common sense regulations to keep firearms out of the hands of people who cannot and should not possess their devastating power to kill and terrorize. That is the end of the document, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. You may be aware, I am alumni at Michigan State. We were there a month ago with a tour with my daughter, and she's considering it. We started at the Union. We walked by Berkey Hall. We had classes in Berkey Hall when I was there. So I appreciate you reading that. It would have been a little bit too close and too soon for me. So at this point, here, I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
Chair Thorp?
Trustee Barry.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution in support of Michigan State University and actions to create safer communities.
I'll support.
Thank you both. Any discussion before a roll call? Trustee McDonald?
I just want to add something, because this is such a tragedy, like it said in the resolution. But one other thing that I just recently became aware of, that is just heartbreaking, is that now the number one cause of children, death, is no longer car accidents and other accidents. It's firearms. And that just speaks volumes. And in our society, we have to start caring more about our children than we do our guns.
Thank you very much. Anything further? Then I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moza?
Yes.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts? Go Green, go White, yes. Chair Thorp?
Yes. Thank you very much to the trustees. This has been an ongoing item that we've been working through for the last several days, and wanted to keep you in the loop as best as we could. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
This is on? It is. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Welcome. Thank you, President Cavalluna, Chairman Thorp, and the rest of the members of the board. My name is Andrew Bedard. I, that's annoying, I'm sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to be this month's reader. Like I said, my name is Andrew Bedard. I am from Allen Park, Michigan. Graduated from South Gaiterson High School in 2021. I'm a sophomore currently. I'll be studying music therapy at Eastern Michigan University. I'll be transferring over there in the fall. And I'm studying jazz studies independently as well. Let's see. I have played with both the jazz and symphony bands here at Henry Ford, as well as multiple independent groups, as well as other colleges' groups here. And I can say that Henry Ford's music department is absolutely incredible. The staff is just extremely knowledgeable. They all know their stuff, and I'm really thankful to be here. Henry Ford has been a wonderful stepping stone for me, as somebody who has a lot of health issues. It's been nice to be able to go part-time without having to worry about, you know, crazy amounts of debt, and without having to worry about traveling too far. You know, 40-minute drive isn't always the most convenient when you've got a lot of health problems. So, you know, cutting that down a little bit is very nice, and I really appreciate the community that is here. Something that I want to mention, the support of my peers, my professors, especially in the honors program, have really been instrumental to my education and to everything. I found that out of everybody, you know, the honors program has been absolutely incredible. They've supported me through some of my toughest times, and I really appreciate that. I look forward to a very bright future where my music can change people's lives, as I've seen firsthand, that it has done to me. Music has changed my life, and I look forward to the possibility of being able to change somebody else's life through my music. And Henry Ford has been, well, wonderful. I've enjoyed it, and thanks to Henry Ford, I am one step closer to that future. Thank you very much. Oh, well, yeah. Now, I'm pleased to read this month's Board of Acknowledgement, Board Acknowledgements. On February 1st, Career Services had Chef Paul Millet from Disney on campus for presentation and interviews for summer internship and co-ops with Disney in the culinary areas. Thirty students attended the session, and more than a dozen in-person interviews were set up for later in the day. Six HFC students were offered and accepted positions at Disney for summer. Many thanks to Career Services staff for a successful event. The annual MCCAA Hunger Games are scheduled to take place at the February 28th men's and women's basketball games, when HFC plays Mott Community College. Admissions to the games will be $10 or five canned food items. All monetary and food donations will go to HFC's student pantry, the Hawks Nest. The Hawks men's basketball team enters its final weeks of the regular season ranked third in the NJCAA Division II Men's Basketball Rankings. This was released on February 12th. Congratulations, team. Congratulations to Jager Kewietauski, who won the 141-pound weight class at the MCCAA Wrestling Championship. Jager was also named the MCCAA Wrestler of the Year, following up his performance as freshman of the year last season. Sophomore guard Dupryon Cole has earned MCCAA Eastern Conference Player of the Week for the fifth time this season. Dupryon has 46 points, 12 rebounds, eight assists, seven steals, and six blocks in wins over St. Clair County and Mott Community College. Congratulations. The Roller Hockey Club is ranked sixth in the National Collegiate Roller Hockey Power Rankings. Congratulations to the team. And the AMA TYC Student Math League is a two-round contest that allows students to attempt challenging, non-standard mathematical questions. Congratulations to the following HFC students for their placement at the end of the first round. In first place is Hadi Swadon. And in second place, which is a tie, Hadi Nasar and Ali Yassin. HFC is ranked ninth as a team in the Midwestern region, and the second round will take place on March 3rd in 2023. Thank you for the opportunity to be this month's reader. May I answer any questions from any of you?
Andrew, I'm just thrilled with your passion for music and the fact that you said it changed your life. And I know a lot of us, when we're feeling whatever we're feeling, we go to music to help us, you know? Now, you did say that you had a passion for jazz, so I'm assuming that you play an instrument?
Yes.
And I did not hear you mention which instrument. And also, do you do any vocals?
I'm not much of a vocal person. I'm working on it. It's something I'm definitely working on. I'm a trumpet player.
Okay.
First off, French horns, my double. But trumpet, trumpet's my main instrument. That is my pride and joy and love, is to just play that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Andrew, I have two questions for you. Number one, you had mentioned that there was a, or mentioned there were times that music kind of brought you to the forefront. Can you bring, give us an example of what that is, just for those that may be hearing the story?
So to clarify, you mean as how music has helped me, or how I have helped others with music?
Both. I was going to say, number two, I wanted to ask if you could speak more about music therapy and what that looks like.
So first of all, this will kind of like bring in both questions into an answer. I experienced music therapy. I was, I had to spend three and a half weeks in a hospital in Cleveland. I had suffered a, for simplicity, spinal cord injury with, where my L4 and L5 vertebrae had dislocated, pinched my spinal cord, and therefore killed my sciatic nerves in my legs. Cleveland taught me how to walk with half-functioning legs. And I've been walking for seven months unassisted. Now, in, so for context, Cleveland is the forefront in medical technology. When Cleveland says something works, the world listens. While I was at Cleveland, part of my daily routine, among all of my other therapies, was I had some kind of recreational therapy, art therapy, but what really piqued my interest was music therapy. Now, I am a, I'm a jazz, I play jazz. And one of my favorite trumpet players of all time has been Wynton Marsalis. He's, have any of you heard of Wynton Marsalis?
Oh, yeah.
So he is a wonderful, absolutely fantastic trumpet player, and he has taken time to be with me. He, I met him at a concert years ago. He's taken time to, we call, we text, we, I've been in conferences with him. And same with my current trumpet teacher, Robert Cox. Like, they have been so instrumental into my playing. When I was so sick, I was bedridden in the hospital, I could only muster five minutes a day, they were there, saying, "Yeah, keep playing." And that music changed my life. Listening to their music, listening to their personalities, being introduced to their personalities through their music has changed my life. And speaking on that music therapy, I wasn't entirely sure what it was before I went to Cleveland. I knew it was a way to assist people of pretty much any struggles that they've been having, PTSD, maybe with Alzheimer's, there's studies that you can look at, that it can help bridge electrical synapses, gaps in the brain, to repair memories for people with Alzheimer's. It's fantastic. But I wasn't really sure. And the hospital I was staying was, it was a children's hospital in Cleveland. And this music therapist, she's fresh out of college, and I say, "I want to learn more. Please tell me." And she goes, "Do you want to shadow me? Do you want to shadow me around the thing?" I was like, "Uh, yes." So when I wasn't like in therapy and, you know, bedridden, she would take me around everywhere, everywhere in the hospital, other than hospice, she would take me. And what really sold me was the infants. I got to view infants, they were just out of NICUs, in a very stressed state. Most were very, they were sleeping for most of the day, around 22 hours a day they were sleeping. So if you can picture, just rows and rows of cribs. And these babies are hooked up to every kind of monitor you can possibly imagine, screens displaying everything. And she pulls out a piano, and she starts singing and playing to these babies, just really simple. Do, 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 do. Just Brahms' Lullaby, right? And over that half hour that she sung and did that, you could visibly watch the infant's stress decrease. Muscle tension relaxed, heart rate went down, breathing rate went down, all showing an indication that those cortisol levels have dropped. She brought me a graph the next day, and you see it drop. It lasted for six hours. And that's when I said, "Yep, that's what I want to do. That's exactly what I'm doing for the rest of my life." I have had many family members who suffer with Alzheimer's and dementia. I've seen, you know, my great-grandma go from remembering all of our names and being the sharpest person I know to barely being able to remember her own children's names. However, music, like I mentioned, was a bridge. And the ability to help anybody, the fact that music therapy can help anybody, not just a specific group, is so encouraging to me. And like I said, I've had my own experience, so thank you. Hopefully, that was a little long, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to say, Andrew, I think we all appreciated that after our resolution, that we needed a little lift me up, so thank you for sharing that.
Of course.
Mr. Bedard, every person who stands in your shoes there has to endure an inquiry from me. But I'm utterly confident you can endure and be the champion of this inquiry. So I'll start off with an easy question, or comment, that is a good segue from Trustee Watts. It's unfortunate that you have to be here in a month that we, as leaders in education, are dealing with the topic that we preceded your presentation with. And what struck me about your beginning was that you said, and because I've listened to you now speak for just a couple minutes, I can tell you've got a very effective command of communication strategies. And you said, "Henry Ford has been, well, wonderful." And I just want to say to you that if any of what you're displaying here today is from Henry Ford, which I hope it is, and it is part of your future, I'll just say, from this board to you, you are wonderful. You are an antidote to some of the ills that we're feeling. And one of the reasons is because you can articulate the way you feel and what you're looking at in your future. And so I want to know, what, you mentioned transfer. What is the future between now and what I can tell is a passion for probably a clinical or medical intersection with music? What's your path?
So, really, I've got two paths. When I mentioned Wynton Marsalis, he is the Director of Jazz Studies at Juilliard, and he wanted me to audition. Depending on if I can get some, you know, money and some support and a lot of practicing in, depending on that, yeah, lots of practicing, oh my gosh, it's an extremely competitive Maybe by the summer I'll audition. But for now, plan is to transfer over to Eastern. Now, once I transfer over to Eastern, my music classes will be out of the way, thankfully, and I will just get to start with music therapy, which means an internship at Ann Arbor Hospital and a few places around there, being able to work in multiple clinical settings. Now, personally, as much as I love music therapy and that, I want my evenings open. I will not settle for putting that thing down. I brought it because I had my speech in the case. I won't settle for putting that down. I want to play gigs at night and the, well, the way I met Wynton Marsalis, the way I met my trumpet teacher, was I went to those gigs, and I listened to them play, and I said, "Wow, they're awesome. Can I meet them?" The answer was yes. And then I was introduced to their personalities, their life-changing, you know, everything to me. So I think I can, I want to help people in those two different ways. So I'm excited to be starting music therapy at Eastern, provided I audition for Juilliard. Even if I don't get in, I think that'll be a wonderful thing in the future to say I auditioned for. And yeah, that's the future.
So here's the harder part of the inquiry here, Andrew. Whether it's Juilliard, or Eastern, or night gigs, whatever your future is, I feel quite confident it'll be successful. But I really do believe it'll be more successful if you carry with you an associate degree from Henry Ford College. And I know that that's a fork in the road that you're trying to navigate now, whether to carry that associate degree with you as you leave us to your next gig, so to speak, or not. And just listening to you, I really enjoy getting to know students, but I regret not having met you before tonight. But I can tell you, like someone you mentioned in your remarks, there is going to be a time, and it may already be, when you speak, the world listens. You've already captivated a group of adults with a very short presentation. And so I need your help, so that you can say, "Getting an associate degree is meaningful, and it's something every Henry Ford College student should do." So, and I'm willing to help you make that conclusion. So I'm bribing you now. Because, one, I do believe that your life will be better, and you'll have a better nuanced story to tell with an associate degree from Henry Ford College. But I'll just put you on the spot. What can I do to help you continue to consider that? Because I know you've got to make that decision soon.
It's just credits. It's just depending on what classes I have taken, what classes I further need to take in order to get that. I mean, I certainly would have turned it down if I was able to, you know, get it all in a timely manner, in a costly manner. My trumpet teacher went here, he got an associate from Henry Ford, and then he transferred to Eastern. So that's another.
And you want to follow in his footsteps, right?
I do. True. Very true. Like I said, it all depends on credits, how fast I can get it. It's not like a speed issue, it's just, I want to move things along, you know?
Yeah, well, you volunteered that you graduated from high school in 2021, is that correct?
Correct.
So can I assume you're younger than 25?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, okay. Well, Andrew, I'm done. I just want to congratulate you. You shared a little bit of the hurdles that you've overcome in your life, and I just want to say, one of the things that you're doing really, really well that will keep you going is you're melding a performance. I can tell you're a performer, and you have an ability to explain things like science and interactions and storytelling, whether it's Juilliard or anywhere else. Keep practicing that craft, because your ability to communicate and perform well, informing, is rare in this world. And at 19, you far exceeded many people, so we're proud to have you here.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity, all of you.
There may be more questions, so.
Any other questions from the board? I don't see any.
I've got nowhere to be.
Thank you, Andrew.
Send me an email about what credits you need to make sure you get the associate degree.
Well, thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much for all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Andrew.
President Cavalluna, one of the things you mentioned is some of our students have been accepted into Disney for the culinary program this summer. If they need care packages, let us know. There might be volunteers that'll go down to Disney to deliver something to us.
I will do that, sir.
Next item.
President's items?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Trustees, I am going to make a few, what I would say, public service announcements, and then the, I'm going to give a gift to your former chairperson. We'll do a photograph of that. And while I'm doing that photograph, I'm going to be inviting Vice President DeLong to the podium to prepare two things for you. One is a really neat, short, I think Vice President DeLong, it's less than two minutes, isn't it? A video about our men's basketball team. And then she's going to give you a short presentation that will supplement what I've already circulated to you all in response to Trustee Barry's request for information about marketing and communication. So on the sort of public service announcements for my report, I was late by a couple minutes to our photograph here, and I apologize for that. It was because I was attending the vigil that our Student Affairs Office put together. Cassandra Fluker put together a wonderful event where I counted roughly 80 people there. I would say, two-thirds of those people were students, talking with each other about processing both what has occurred over the last week in Michigan and at Michigan State, I should say, in our state and at Michigan State University, and also what we want to think about with ourselves here on campus. I have also, and I reported to that vigil, that the Chair of this board has asked me to review our posture vis-à-vis campus safety generally, and whether and if we should have armed personnel on campus. I'm under that evaluation right now, and I'll be reporting out to the broader community if and what we'll be doing in any changes of that. You will recall, those of you certainly who have been with me during my tenure, will recall that in 20, late 2018, early 2019, we did an analysis of our campus safety posture. I'm happy, I think I actually did recirculate that to the board recently, but I'm happy to recirculate it to you. But the summary of that was there were mixed feelings about whether this campus wanted individuals with armed personnel on the campus. And the Chair has asked me to evaluate whether that is still unknown, or whether we want to make our posture change. And for the benefit of anyone watching, and you all trustees, recall that our campus safety department is not armed, and we do rely on the Dearborn Police to respond when we need law enforcement. And God forbid we were to have an act of violence, and in my tenure, we've had just a very few number of violence, not firearm-related violence, but if we were to have an act of violence, we would rely on the Dearborn Police to come, and they have been historically astonishingly quick getting to the campus. That report evaluated the response time, and it was one of the reasons, at least some of the people surveyed, thought we did not need an armed personnel on campus. And whether we keep that posture or not is an open question. You did see that I circulated a message to the entire campus community, asking them to review our policies and procedures. And then at tonight's vigil, I'll repeat, I'll repeat to you what I said. If anyone who's a part of our community has thoughts or strong feelings about the way we should think about this question, change or keep our status quo, I'm always open to hear it. And all of the staff, there were many vice presidents, many director-level personnel who were with us at the vigil, we're all open to any feedback, but particularly those from the students who we have the privilege of serving, like Andrew and Elena. I think you probably see Elena as probably the supporter of most of the honor students who've come before you. I also want to invite you to the collage concert, which is tomorrow night, is that right?
Yeah.
Tomorrow night? If trustees, if you have interest in coming, I'm more than happy to organize a ticket for you. I will be there, and I will also be noting that Kevin Dewey, our esteemed faculty member there, will be doing his last collage concert as a full-time faculty member. He has announced he's retiring, and I'll be at that collage concert, watching for his last full-time faculty seat as a collage concert. I have to suspect Dr. Nealon, Mr. Dewey likely will be doing collage concerts for years to come.
Andrew's taking over.
Okay. Then, folks, we have the Lieutenant Governor coming to our campus this week. He'll be meeting with students, and his intention was originally to talk about what his boss, the governor, has recommended as the budget for higher education. But I suspect our students may have some additional questions, and I'll share more details with the broader campus community of what that event was like. with the broader campus community of what that event was like. Because as you might imagine, the Lieutenant Governor asked it to be a more intimate event where he got to interact with a smaller group of students and we're going to organize that, but then report out what took place there. I am still waiting to find out if trustees are invited to that and I'll let you know as soon as I hear back. You also know that I have enjoyed doing First Fridays with the college and I won't go through what that is because I assume each of you have suffered through watching one or two of them. But I heard the feedback and it was Fridays are maybe the best time of the week to have in-person events. So we've shifted. We'll be having them in the middle of the week and we'll be having them on campus in various areas of the campus. And our Hawk Talk for the first time in person is this week. And it is, is it Wednesday at noon?
Twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty in the Student Center, where we invite you to come join us and talk about anything you want and no matter who you are, whether you're a faculty member, a student, a staff member, or just a person interested in Henry Ford College. And then last, trustees, I do want to encourage you to join me at what I see our President of AFO has invited us to a party. I believe it's, is it the Fifteen Year Party, Dr. Boza?
Fifteen years of organization.
Fifteen years of organization. President Boza has invited this Board to attend on Thursday afternoon at four-thirty at DeLuca's Restaurant. And I will be making a stop there. That is the one on Warren in Westland. And I would ask trustees, if they're interested, for a good event, good food, to please stop by there. And then I'll pause now for any questions. And after questions, Trustee McDonald, I'll ask you to come back into the front of the table for a photograph. Any questions, trustees? Thank you. I forgot to say one thing, Trustee Chairman Thorpe. I was excited to announce to the trustees that last week I had the pleasure of being invited to meet with the Ford Foundation President, his name is Warren, I'm sorry, Darren Walker. And I'm hopeful that the Ford Foundation is interested in supporting our student success work. And my hope is to have an announcement for you soon about that. The Mayor of Dearborn asked me to attend a conference last week in New York City. And your Chair, never to miss an opportunity, said, you know, you need to work on the Ford Foundation. So I knew someone who knew the President and said, hey, would you mind us meeting with the President? Sure that he would say, no, there's no way. We're having a board meeting that week. But the truth is, Chairman Thorpe, he said, yeah, come on in. So we were pitching Henry Ford College's student success agenda at the Ford Foundation last week and I almost forgot. So thank you for reminding me, Mr. Chairman.
It's always good to know a person who knows a person. A lot gets done that way.
I say that's how the world works these days.
Mr. Ross, roast a photograph, but before I do, I want to talk a bit about what I'm going to ask a photograph. And then Vice President DeLonge, this will be my stall tactic so you can get into position to prepare your presentation. But it really isn't a stall presentation. This is a plaque that has a rather small gavel because I sat next to you for an entire year. And this gavel can make plenty of noise and I didn't want your wonderful husband to have to deal with the full-size plaque gavel. But it says Roxanne McDonald, Chairwoman, Henry Ford College Board of Trustees in 2022. And in a minute, we'll take a photograph, Madam Chair. But I'll just say, this should have come with hazard pay. It was a long 2022. And to be a Chair of a school board or to be a Chair of a college is enough work on its own. But those of you who weren't living under a rock know that you had a lot to deal with that year. I hope you feel like your work was successful. I hope you know that the college was appreciative of the hard work and also appreciative of the difficulties that you faced. And I hope that this plaque reminds you of the successes you had and not the trauma you endured. But in any event, it is yours to keep as a moment, a token of our appreciation. And Lance, if you wouldn't mind, we'll take a picture.
Well, I do want to say something. I want to thank the Board very much for your work. It was a difficult year and you guys...
Oh, thank you. It was a difficult year and you guys stood by me and helped me through some difficult times. I've learned something from every member of this Board, not just last year, but in previous years that I've been on the Board. So thank you for your service, President Cavallino. We went through a lot together.
Sorry.
That was your victory song.
I think it's signing a rock.
I think it's the music therapy. So just thank you very much. We went through a lot of things that this Board has never had to deal with before. So it was an interesting year and I do believe it was a successful year. So thank you and thank you, everyone. And that goes for the Cabinet and other members of the Faculty and everyone in the college community. We work as a team and we go through some difficult times, but we do it as a family. So thank you.
So as Russ sort of teased a little for you, this video is a, it's a vlog, a video blog. By, well, you'll see who it's by. It's a couple of minutes and it gives you a really great sense of what is happening with our men's basketball team at this time.
With the Juco Jam, I'm McNeilson. For today's sixth man, I want to talk about Henry Ford. Not the man, the community college. Henry Ford, eighteen and four. They are currently ranked number three in NJCAA Division Two. They have had one of the most difficult schedules of the Division Two teams. They played at Vincennes, played them really tough. They lost eighty-three to eighty. Later on in the season, they decided to take an eighteen-hour bus trip to Tallahassee where they played both Tallahassee and Chapola. Their other loss was to Niagara, who's ranked number two in Division Two. Won fourteen in a row, nine and oh in conference, just had a big buzzer beating victory over then number six Macomb. This is a team, I think, poised, a challenge for a national title at the Division Two level. They went out and played a tough schedule because they knew they'd have a great team and they wanted to get kind of tournament-tested. And I got a player for you, BG, DQ Cole. He's a six-four, left-handed kid, twenty points, nine rebounds a game, on a high-volume, thirty-nine percent from three, seventy-eight percent free throw. Oakland University, I hear, is on him hard. Oakland has pretty good luck with the Juco kids. Jalen Moore from All Need Central was having a great career at Oakland. And maybe DQ Cole is the next guy on that list.
There we go.
Do you want to say anything about that, Russ?
So that buzzer beater game was last weekend. I wasn't able to attend in person, but I was watching on the Internet. It was against, it was against Mott, I believe. Or Macomb, I can't remember because we'd beaten both of those schools. But their best two players, Hawks' best two players, were not able to play. And they played them tough and won on a buzzer beater. And, you know, it's nationally recognized now. That's a video blog that if you're in the junior college basketball scene, you watch that video blog. And so if you see any of our players or if you'd like to watch our players, I would recommend you come to visit us at the... Andrew talked about it.
The twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth is when they're going to play...
Hunger Games.
Mott, that's going to be a good game. Mott wants revenge. And bring five cans of food, which will go to the Hawks' Nest, which is right out here. And you'll see me and my family will be there and hopefully the Hawks will close out what'll be what'll be the championship of the league. And then they'll have to win the tournament at the end of the league's tournament at the end of the season to go to the national playoffs, which, as you know, they've been to three out of the last four years. But I could talk and talk and talk and talk. It's why I wanted to do a minute-half video. So I wouldn't talk, but then you invited me, Vice President.
You needed that invitation, I'm sure. Thank you, thank you, Board of Trustees, Chair Thorpe and the Board and Russ for giving me an invitation to do this presentation. I must tell you, though, I'm not going to be able to do inform and perform as our wonderful student. Everyone here should know that the Board got a much more detailed version of the presentation you're about to see. I did try to cut it down a lot and there's still probably too much, but I'll try to keep it really brief. So if you have questions about any of it, I will look forward to answering those. That will help me focus specific things that you might be interested in. So the first thing I'd want you to know is this is just a general summary of what we are doing in marketing and who our teams are and kind of the value that we bring to the college. The agenda that we have, very brief. I'm just going to talk about some of the things that we do. Advertising is always very visible, so that's going to be kind of a core part. And then to talk about where we're going next. This is something that I wrote to kind of help me stay focused. I describe marketing to people as messages of relevance and value at the right time. And I think, you know, there's a lot to it, but you can kind of boil it down to that. So this is why what our purpose is as a division, and there are three different teams that are part of that division. We have external and internal goals because, keep in mind, everyone starts as an external person and then we hope that they will become a member of the internal community. So we're here externally, you know, enrollment, partnerships and investment in the college are our core goals. And once people get here and become part of our community, we want to support them and make them feel the meaningful connections to us that keep them here and build our community. This is our marketing team, the specific marketing and graphics team. None of the people on this team, aside from yours truly, are marketing people. So that is why I'm intending on doing a little bit of growth in that space. It's been a rigorous, rigorous job for the five and a half years that I've held it. And I'm bursting at the seams in terms of what the college needs and that's why we're going to bring in a little bit of additional help. Some of the things this team does are, it's all of the things that you would expect a marketing communications group to do and probably a few things that you might not expect. And I'll give you some examples of those. Some of the highlights of our marketing efforts, you see very publicly. We do media relations, public relations, there's media content. We do a lot of storytelling and I'll talk a little more about that in a minute. We have a website that has a robust variety of content and resources. We seek out the really cool stories, like the guy that worked for Ford who built a Bronco out of snow before the Bronco was released. And then some of the amazing stories. And I would point out Byron Brooks on this slide, he's at the lower middle there. He's actually an example of a story that by our discovering that story, it helped advance his career and his life. He was, I ended up, I just bumped into Byron when I was on the Diversity Task Force. And I started talking to him, as we often do with students, and discovered his story and that kind of helped launch a lot of the platform that he has built since then. So those kinds of successes are really heartwarming for us. We also do a lot of major events. Both the Governor and the Lieutenant Governor have been here more than once since they were elected the last time around. We've had legislative friends on campus. We recently did, as many of you were there, the launches of the two Learn Forward partnerships that have already happened and we're going to have some more of those coming up. And Education Secretary Miguel Cardona was on campus during the pandemic. So there have been a lot of really high-profile activities and the Lieutenant Governor's coming back this week, as Russ noted. One of the really big things that we try to do in marketing is develop distinction, a sense of distinction. What makes you distinctive and meaningful to people? And it's really hard, I will confess, this is really hard, especially in a place like education. There are a lot of people trying to do similar things. And we are seeking true distinctions. And we can make all kinds of claims, marketers are good at that. But where you get to the real depth and the real meaning is in the stories of our people. And so we've instituted no fewer than eight series of stories in the last few years since I've been here. And I'm just going to give you a few examples. If you haven't, I can send you URLs for these. But student success is my favorite and probably the most prominent one. We have, all of these are stories of individuals and small groups who have had success. The transfer stories is a really big thing that's growing now because we want to encourage that sort of thing. These are stories of people of all ages, some of them far into their careers, even retired, and others who have just transferred recently. And we're going to have a couple more coming out of the honors program soon. This one I was proud of, Get to Know HFC, was something that I implemented during the pandemic because I realized no one was ever running into anyone else on this campus. We weren't here. So how are people going to get to know who their partners were? Who are your teammates? Who are the people, the new people and those that you didn't already know? And that series has been so popular that we've actually extended it into another HFC welcome series, et cetera. So there are other series about program spotlights, alumni success, and of course, the President's Holiday Series is kind of a fun one that we've done, too. Another team is the Admissions and Recruiting Team. We are able to, largely due to a grant that we had some great leadership from other Vice Presidents here, is bringing three new recruiters for grant-funded recruiters. The fourth new recruiter is a replacement for somebody who left in the fall. And we're really focusing the new recruiters on some growth areas for us. We're doing a very good job of recruiting high schools. We have one hundred and ten high schools that we work with. That's probably too many to be spreading among the few recruiters that we have. So we're getting more strategic and more focused around that. But I think a lot of our growth in the future, really, if you look at the demographic trends, is going to be in the adult student population. So one of our new recruiters is going to focus almost exclusively on that and then we'll be surrounding that person with more support. We are also looking at getting a bilingual recruiter to help us with the Hispanic community because as with many of the cultural groups that we have here, you don't just recruit a student, you recruit a family. And you need to be in that community and you need to be someone that can be trusted. So building those relationships is a big part of what we're trying to do. So that's sort of our core focus in recruiting and admissions. And we did just hire a Director of Admissions and Recruiting, which has been great. She's off to a rapid start with some really big projects. We also have discovered, perhaps surprisingly, there is a large appetite for what we call collateral, which is print publications. People ask us, what do you have? What can I take home? What can I share with my family? Even young students want this. And people say, oh, it's all digital. Well, there is, because things have become so digital, there's more of an appetite for really well-done collateral. So we have three kind of series. One of them is general. We have two different versions of our viewbook, which is, you know, talks about the college, our programs. We have, we developed this year a youth-targeted viewbook. It's targeted toward people in junior high because we need to start our relationships with our prospective students and their families early. And then, you know, our Fast Facts brochure. We also have developed a series that is, I think, going to be fantastic around the specific, the convergence of our programs that have high capacity and strong employment prospects with demand. We pull those things together and right now, we've got a series, there are probably about half a dozen of these and we will have dozens of them by the time we're done because students want more. They get the viewbook and then they say, well, I'm interested in engineering. Do you have something about that? So it's proven to be really useful. And then our on-campus recruiter and some students came up with this idea of doing a coloring book, which we'd never done before and I was frankly skeptical at the beginning, but we decided to do it. And it's just come hot off the press and so far, everybody's clamoring for copies of it. So who knows what happens with that, but it's an interesting project. And then our third team is the web team. These are the people that manage both the website that you see and the infrastructure that runs it. And we have another fifth member of the team who is part of ITS, but Rachel is the Accessibility Manager. And she is always in our team meetings and she helps keep us honest about the user experience and a very important side of things. And the web team is going to be embarking on a really exciting project this year. In doing some research and really looking at what our current website does, it is focused on information and resources, and that's fine. But it doesn't do a good enough job of curating our content and it doesn't do a good enough job of giving students the experience that we want them to have. So instead of coming to the website to get information and resources, we want students to come, prospective students and families to come and see themselves at the college, to have an experience that makes them want to be part of this community, that makes them feel a sense of belonging and being welcomed. So Hawk Central is going to be a completely, a complete revolutionization of how we do our website, targeted toward customizing content and using, if we, you know, I know this is a very hot topic right now, but artificial intelligence may be part of how we end up doing this. Because the idea is to draw someone in and then find out what they're interested in and what they're good at and what their aspirations are and then build around that the customization that would get them to where they want to go, instead of expecting them to follow certain processes and procedures that we have in place. So I think that's one of the most exciting things that we're planning to do this year. I'm going to take you on a quick run through our advertising strategy and tactics. The summary of why we do advertising is because we have to. It is an extremely competitive landscape. You can see it everywhere. If you look around, even just at outdoor billboards, you will see injury lawyers, health systems, higher education. These are the top people who are advertising in that space and all across many different types of advertising. In fact, we are in every channel where you might expect us to be in advertising and some that you wouldn't. Now, I'm going to tell you right now, you're never going to see us buying a Super Bowl ad because that would be multiple years of my budget in one ad. But we do. We do advertise on television. We do all kinds of advertising across many channels. We do them in waves. There are three major flight periods during the year when you'll see most of our advertising focused around enrollment. And then through the rest of the year, we have some digital and... And then through the rest of the year, we have some digital and some places to kind of keep us from dropping completely out of the marketplace. And then, of course, there's a return on investment. I have to know, and I feel that I owe it to the college, to know whether the work we're doing is making a difference. And, and by, there, there's this thing called benchmarks in the industry, which is where you would expect. It's kind of the middle of the road where you would expect someone who's performing well to be. And every year, I'm very proud to say, we are either at or above the industry benchmarks in all across the units that we, we work in. And I work very closely with a bunch of, probably more than you can imagine, suppliers who help us. And we, we tweak and we, we retarget and we figure out where our advertising should be. And it's, it's, by all the metrics we're able to measure, it is working very well. This year, we had about 85 million impressions, which that's the number of times anyone encountered any of our ads. That, that sounds like an awful lot, and that is, that does not include people who come to our owned media, which is our website and our social media. So we are well over probably 100 million, and I'd love to see a lot more of them become students here. But by the ways we can measure it, we are getting a good, a good return on investment that, for what we do. And then the last thing I want to show you is some creative framing, just to explain what we're doing when you see our ads out there. When I arrived at the college, this was the campaign, and it was focused on the track, driven tagline. And I thought it was a very competent campaign, but it didn't have emotional resonance. So I wanted to move in the direction of storytelling with, with authentic students and the stories that they had. So we, we kept the future-driven and we made it more personal. I am future-driven and focused these on different careers. And, and this was an improvement, but it still didn't get us all the way to where we wanted to be. And then, very, very helpfully, Russ came to me once and said, why, why are we not focusing on these two big, big chips that we have in the game? The tuition frees and the tuition-free college degrees? So we decided to advertise those specifically, and we've gotten a lot of play on these. And we actually partnered with Detroit Promise to, to co-advertise the Detroit Promise program. And these were developed before the tuition-free programs that are out now. And we've done some advertising around that, too. Futures was a short-lived program, but Reconnect is still out there. And then, of course, the Michigan Achievement Scholarship is available now. So trying to tell people, these two were more specific to what we were doing, and the rest are statewide, but we're going to advertise on those anyway. And then now where we are is we're trying to focus on some of the hot careers. We're trying to show the faces of, of students who are, who express the diversity and the, the sort of thriving community that we have here at the college, and use some, some sort of catchy taglines. We try to keep our outdoor, which is what you're looking at here, very brief. You'll see a lot of, of boards out there, they just have a ton of words on them, and they're, they're not very effective. We have found that these do, they do what we want them to do, which is create a sense of emotional resonance and connection and make people sort of interested in looking into more. So that's a very broad overview of our creative. This is the latest in our series, that I showed you a compendium of these a couple months ago, and this one is the latest in that series.
The best part of HFC is the community. I'm a very diverse person, I have diverse interests. The support that I've received from faculty and students alike has been outrageous. And I feel like that is what's most important, and like, that gives us as students confidence to continue.
When COVID hit, I had already been thinking about making a career pivot, and HFC allowed me to come back to college.
If it looks big and scary, just take the step it's not. Start where you are now and change your stars.
So that's one of about six different creative spots that we have for that. And we are working on our website, a lot of websites now have moving video at the beginning of the website. So we're working on one for that, and I'm going to show you the prototype of it. The, the music that's with it is not, we wouldn't be playing that music on the website, but we would use this for other purposes. So I'll be interested to know what you think about that. Pretty much shared with you what our, our upcoming plans are, focused on that strategic plan, and also making sure that while we do have to do transactional work because people have to pay us for classes and sign up for classes, we would like their experience of this college to be relational, not transactional. So does anyone have any questions?
Trustee Barry?
Yes, thank you for that report. I think the reason I asked for some kind of update or report, because I was feeling something out there. I was seeing some of this work that you were putting out there. I just wanted to see if it was just me, or, you know, numbers speak volume. Those numbers you showed are just unbelievable. I kind of understand marketing, so that's, thank you for all that. Return on investment, it's definitely there. You're 100% right. You don't, you know, if you don't do, if you don't market yourself, then you're just out of the game. It's just that simple. So the only thing I wanted, maybe you can elaborate a little bit on, I know you mentioned all the high schools that we serve, many high schools. You mentioned the adult, adult students outreach. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? What are we doing there in that department?
Yeah, that's, that, thank you for asking that, Trustee Barry. And by the way, I had forgotten to mention that we had a, an increase in budget a couple of years ago that was due to Vice President Setkowsky and support from this board, and I want to thank you again for that. As far as adult students go, the answer is we are not doing enough. That's why we need to focus on that market. We've been doing it mostly through serendipity. So if there's an event that we know is happening, some, we've worked a little bit with Michigan Works and others, but we just haven't been focused enough on how do we find the adults who need the programs that we offer and get that information to them, again, in ways that are relevant and valuable to them, because it is not anywhere near the same type of recruiting. The reasons adults go to school are almost 100% different. I mean, it's, at the core, it's the education, but if you drew a Venn diagram between, you know, high school students and, and adult students, what they want, education be in the middle, and everything else is in the outer realms. So marketing this, we, we've been successful in recruiting adult students partly through what they call stealth, which is people just sort of show up. And I think some of that is our general marketing and what they hear about it, but we haven't done enough targeted work toward finding the people who need us. Some of that will involve employer relationships in new and different ways than what we've done in the past. Some of it will involve community relationships. Some of it will involve working with agencies that also work with adults, so we need to develop more partnerships in that space and really get on a one-to-one basis, what do you need? Because a lot of adults who want to go back to school, they actually don't know the answer to that question. And there's a lot of stigma still among some adults about being like the old person in the class, or is this a, is this a field that is welcoming to older people? Am I going to be able to do this work? And, you know, it's part of our job is to help them make good decisions in that space. For example, you know, we have a Power and Trades Pathways Program. I wouldn't necessarily recommend someone my age be climbing those poles, you know, for a living. But, but how can we help make that convergence of people's talents and skills, their existing experience, and put that together with a career path that can get them to where they need to go as quickly as possible? So that's a great question.
Can you just recommend one thing? You have to know that communities that you serve.
Yes.
I think it's not just Dearborn, it's, you know, outside of Dearborn, too.
Yes.
Detroit, maybe down river.
That's right, yes.
A lot of the parents want to get back into school, but quote-unquote, they want to help their kids get along first. So you might somehow, some way tap into the current students and...
Yeah, that's a great idea.
... somebody at home, especially when they, when they claim, you know, first-time college student, what's going on at home, maybe you reach out to them.
That is such a great point, and thank you for making that.
You're right, we just, they show up, we take care of them.
Yeah.
Whatever we do, we have to reach out to them, so.
Well, well, when I was talking about Hawk Central, one of the pieces of that that I want to build is we have all this wonderful content we've been developing for years, and a lot of it is stories. We have parents and children's stories, where there's a mom and her daughter, they're both students here at the same time. So this, this parameter, search parameter I'm trying to build would allow you to put in pieces of your life, and then it would bring up stories that sort of are reflective of what your aspirations are. So having people find those stories and say, yeah, this happens here, people are successful here doing that, is a great point. Thank you, that's a great way to do it.
I can share something with you.
Please.
The person that was doing my marketing for the last couple of years, that was his main thing, is telling stories, telling stories, telling stories. But what happened was he learned a little bit too much about my business, he became a Realtor himself.
[laughing]
And he's doing phenomenal. First year in the business, he's doing phenomenal.
Well, how do you feel about that?
Keep telling those stories. Oh, I'm, I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
Good.
I'm, in fact, I'm like his mentor, so, but keep telling those stories.
Thank you. And you, you may notice sometimes at these meetings, I'm actually on my phone texting about the, the stories we're going to tell that I'm hearing about here. So that's been a great thing.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
Trustee Moszep.
I also appreciate the report, Mr. Long. I, I wanted to ask you, you mentioned, looted a little bit into artificial intelligence and...
Yes.
Having something, can you elaborate more on that?
Yeah.
When we're attracting right now high school students, which is a major focus, are we looking also into chatbots to answer?
Yes.
FAQs, is that something in the horizon?
It, it is, and actually, Dr. Ganko is working with a group of people and Dr., or Holly Diamond is working with a group of people right now on bringing in a, a chatbot that's associated with advising. And that will actually replace the chat function that we have on our website right now, which is, is not meeting our needs and our students' needs the way that it should. The brief answer to your question about AI is, what I would like to see is a student or a family member be able to come to our website and, and ask real questions that would get them to that trove of stories and that information about programs and help guide them. And I'm not sure that using the, our existing technologies, which do not include AI, will get me all the way there. So we have a lot of work to do. We're working with some backend stuff and doing some prototyping right now of traditional programming. But I really would like it to be smart enough that it could help somebody figure out the next layer around the question they're asking. Because you don't always know the exact right question to ask. If you've never heard of mechatronics, how would you ever enroll in a mechatronics class unless somebody says, well, that's electronics, robotics, engineering together? And you'd be like, oh, my gosh, that sounds great. So trying to find this convergence of the stories of our people, the programs that we have, I think that might require some additional kinds of programming that we haven't invested in yet. Although I have to say, if you all read what's been happening with Bing and some of these other technologies lately, you're, it's a little, ooh, you want to stay, be careful with that stuff.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
That is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items for Action who have submitted a blue card by 7:10 PM to the Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit comments to three minutes. If during those three minutes, the comments become personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant, your public comment time may be interrupted or ended. There are no blue cards.
Okay.
Apologies.
All right, next item.
Action to approve action items. At this time, the Secretary will call for action items to approve all the action items on this agenda, except for items excluded from the action by more, by more, by Board Member request. Move to approve action items numbered one through nine, 11 through 17, as recommended in this agenda, except for number 10 that was pulled and number 18 for a roll call vote.
Do we have a motion?
No move.
Support.
Moved by Trustee D'Ambrogio, supported by Trustee Petlicov. Questions on any action items, anything that anyone would want pulled before we move forward? I'll give everyone a minute. This is a longer list of items than we normally have. Hearing none. If you can go ahead and, and read the motion one more time, and we'll call the vote.
Recommended action, move to approve action items numbered one through nine, 11 through 17, as recommended in this agenda, except for number 10 pulled and number 18 for a roll call vote.
All those in favor of approving the recommended action signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. And then going back to number 18.
Recommended action, move to approve the resolution of the Board of Trust of Education of the School District of the City of Dearborn, approving a construction and completion assurance agreement, a conveyance of property, a lease and an easement agreement, if necessary, for the Henry Ford College Entrepreneur and Innovation Institute slash Technology Building renovation.
Some moved.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Petlicov, supported by Trustee McDonald. Any questions or discussion on this item? On this, we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moszep?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. Chair Thor.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on then to the next item.
Board of Trustees Business, acknowledgements of correspondence. Board Committee Reports.
I don't believe we had any subcommittees that have met since we last formed the committees. Next.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
One thing that I will mention again is we are scheduled as a board to meet next Tuesday, the 28th, at 5:30 at the P-12 Board Room for a study session on bylaws and policies. I've gotten a few items and been forwarding them onto Mr. Mustin in, so let us know about any additional policies or bylaws you'd like us to try to tackle next Tuesday. And again, this is just going to be for us to all be together to share our feelings on it before we turn it back over to Policy Committee. Any additional requests for information or future agenda items for the college? You're all quiet tonight. Next.
Board Member Commentary.
Trustee McDonald?
I just want to give a thank you to, I'm assuming this was Fred and his team and anyone else that worked on the electric vehicle, because there was an issue, and we discussed last year, issue, or last month, issues with timeliness when we have things that are covered by Perkins Grants, and how important it is to get those, those done. I know how difficult it has been to find vehicles, so thank you very much for your work, and I'm glad to see that you were able to do that, and appreciate your, your extra efforts in making sure that we were able to get them in a timely manner, and we managed to save a little money, so thank you.
I really appreciate it. Give all the credit to the sales manager at Henry Ford. He contacted me.
Wonderful.
And said, hey, do you still need any of these vehicles? They weren't able to bid on it, literally, because they didn't have any available, so he remembered us and said, are you still interested? Yes, you know, let's stop. That was just an outstanding sales rep.
Absolutely. Well, that's also building relationships, too, so, wonderful. Thank you for that, and thank to him.
He remembered us, the, the advertising's working, Ron.
[laughing]
Additional commentary? Trustee Watts?
I wanted to say that I was in Washington DC, February 6th through 8th, for ACCT's Policy Conference. It was very well-attended, and we were able to speak with some of our legislators and share some of the good things that Henry Ford College is doing and promoting goodwill with other community colleges here in Michigan, and continuing those relationships, so.
We did receive one email that I'll mention, that is from MCCA regarding trustee training that they're going to be holding on Friday, the 3rd of March. So that is something that's also available. And I believe we had asked before President Cavalluna about, we know that we've got like the, the school board side when we've got, all the trustees have a chance to get together. But I forget, is there anything really from MCCA for the trustees to get a chance to talk with other people at a state level?
Yeah, there, there are several options for general information sharing. One is to serve as this college's board member for the MCCA that you all, I believe the chair either cajole someone into doing or assign someone. I don't think I've ever seen this board vote for that position. Another option is the annual conference that the MCCA does, and some colleges send more than one trustee. And then what Trustee Watts just mentioned, ACCT is another option where some colleges send more than one trustee. But I will say, Mr. Chairman, trainings are not all that common from MCCA. I'm not sure if that's because of the transition in leadership, but in my four and a half years with you all, I haven't seen much training done from MCCA. That is more often done by the two national associations for which you all are a member. One is ACCT, the American, I mean, sorry, the Association of Community College Trustees, and then AACC, the Association, the American Association of Community Colleges. Both of them have constant training, both self-guided, that is available, and in person.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Future meeting dates. Just a reminder, Tuesday, February 28th, 5:30 PM, the Board Study Session at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, March 13th, 2023, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, March 20th, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, 6 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. And Monday, March 20th, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Thank you all, we are adjourned.